Call the Selectmen's meeting to order Wednesday, October 19th, 2022 at 6:30 p.m. Jim, do we have a need for non-public?
We do RSA 91A 3D acquisitions, sale, or lease of real estate.
Okay, next is consideration of minutes, September 21st.
I have just one change on page six, the sixth paragraph down, the last line, and I would like overturn and I'd like insert it in there, the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
That's the only thing I have.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion with amendment?
I'll move that the September 21st, 2022 minutes be accepted as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next is September 28th, 2022. This was the night we had all the agencies in.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain, I wasn't here.
Next is minutes of October 5th. Create a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the August 5th, 2022 minutes as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have some public hearings. Temporary event permits. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, approximately 6:30. The Great Hall, Town Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire. Consideration of temporary event permit for the Rotary Club of Wolfboro to host the annual Christmas Tree Sale fundraiser at the Clark House from November 25th, 2022, December 18th, 2022, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., Thursday through Sundays. Anybody here from the Rotary?
Good evening, I'm Zachary Porter for the Wolfboro Rotary Club. The permit we're requesting is for the annual Christmas Tree Sale. We've done this for quite some time. As described in the summary of the permit, we would be looking to begin the sale the day after Thanksgiving, that's November the 25th, and then continue to operate each Friday through Sunday from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., until we're out of trees, which is usually about two and a half weeks. This is how we fund this, combined with our golf tournament, is how we fund the various causes we support, and that includes a number of local charities, as well as high school scholarships. Last year, we were able to provide 13 scholarships. 12 were to seniors graduating from Kingswood, and one of those was a Wolfboro resident who graduated from Brewster Academy. We've already gotten the go-ahead from the Historical Society. We do typically have a small wood fire for warmth and ambiance during the event, and we have already obtained a permit to do that again.
Okay, this is a public hearing, does anybody want to speak in favor? Anybody want to speak against? Okay, close the public hearing. Board?
I'll make a motion. Move to issue a temporary event permit for the Rotary Club of Wolfboro to host the annual Quiet and Restful Christmas Tree Sale fundraiser at the Clark House from November 25th, 2022 to December 18th, 2022, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., Thursday through Sunday. Permit number 2022-72.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, the next public hearing, Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, at approximately 6:30 in the Great Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, for consideration of a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to host the annual trick-or-treat at the Clark House complex on October 21st, 2022, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Somebody here to speak to that?
Good evening, Libby Shannon from the Wolfboro Historical Society, and we're requesting a temporary permit to have a Halloween trick-or-treat walkthrough. This will be our third annual, and we just hold it during trick-or-treat hours, Monday, October 31st, from 5:00 to 7:00, within the Historical Society complex, and we just hand out candy. When the candy's gone, we're done. So, no one goes in the buildings or anything. That's all I have.
Okay. This is a public hearing, anybody else want to speak in favor? Anybody want to speak against? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Board?
I just have one comment, my grandkids loved it last year, and thank you very much for doing it, it's a great addition.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to issue a temporary event permit to Wolfboro Historic Society to host the annual trick-or-treat at the Clark House complex on October 31st, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Permit number 2022-73.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next public hearing is for an alcohol permit. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, on or about 6:30 at the Wolfboro Town Hall, Great Room, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire. Consider the application for an issuance of an alcoholic beverage permit to the American Legion Post 18 for their sock hop fundraiser on November 12th, 2022, in the Great Hall at Town Hall, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Is somebody here? Oh, there is.
They roll up the streets here a little bit early, don't they?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You look good like that.
Yeah.
Tom, you want to state your name for the record, please?
I'm Tom Southern, I'm the commander of Post 18 in Wolfboro, following Harold Chamberlain. I always say, I'm not replacing Harold Chamberlain, because there's no replacing Harold Chamberlain. Anyway, we want permission to put on a dance as a fundraiser, as you know, our building is falling apart, and we're trying to come up with means of starting to raise some funds. We're not going to raise anywhere near what we need with just something like this, but it's a start. Hopefully, you know, this will gain some momentum, and we'll have people in town, other organizations, come forth and help us. We're proposing a sock hop for Saturday, 12th of November, for 7:00 to 9:30, for you guys and girls that are 21 and over. Music, entertainment, and dance will be by Billy Dee and the Rockets. Anybody heard of them? You can go online, look up Billy Dee and the Rockets. They're a doo-wop band, playing music from the 50s, so we're encouraging people, even if you don't go that far back, wear poodle skirts, black leather jackets, saddle shoes, high school and other period attire. We'd like to have a cash bar for beer and wine, and concessions available for Obistro. Legion is not handling any of the alcohol. There will be no BYOB, and this will be for individuals 21 and over. Event is sponsored by Eastern Oil and Propane, Wright Museum, Bistro, Kingswood Press. Tickets will be $25 per person, advance, 30 at the door, pay by check or cash only. You have a couple places, they can be picked up in advance, one is the Chamber of Commerce, and the other one, Black's Paper Store, and that information will be on that little flyer. We plan to post that around town, we'll probably hit the TV stations and the radio stations, and obviously word of mouth.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in favor of this? Anybody want to speak against it? Hope not. Okay, board? Any questions for Tom? Anyone want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to move to issue an alcohol beverages permit to the American Legion Post 18 for the sock hop fundraiser on November 12th, 2022, in the Great Hall at the Town Hall, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tom, good luck.
No, thank you very much, I'll expect all you to be there, in your black leather and your rolled-up t-shirts with your pack of cigarettes in the sleeves, any of you guys remember that? No, you're old, you're, you're doing, don't you? Oh, what a time.
Some of us are old enough. Okay, the next one we have is unanticipated funds. Town of Wolfboro to hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, 6:30 for the acceptance of unanticipated funds, in an amount more than $10,000, in accordance with RSA 31095B3A, to accept an amount of the New Hampshire Department of Safety for the Wolfboro Highway Safety Grant, in the amount of $15,269.59 for fiscal year 2023.
Yeah, so this is, Captain Mark Libby, this is our highway safety grants that we perform every year. This year, we got a good amount of funds given to us compared to last year, which was 2,000. The state has increased that for us to perform those certain functions.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so is there anybody who wants to speak in favor? Or against? No, no, close the public hearing. Board?
Yeah, I just want to point one thing out, is that there's money for pedestrian bicycle, am I correct, which we didn't have this year, and I think we heard...
That is correct.
And I think the public will be glad to know that that is going to be back.
Yes.
And thank you for getting a grant for that.
Yep, that is correct.
Want to make a motion?
Sure, I will make the motion to accept an amount of, of a New Hampshire Department of Safety for the Wolfboro Highway Safety Grant, in the amount of $15,269.59 for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you. Bulk vote?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to remove B solar pilot request assessing. This is a pilot, and usually we do pilots as an agenda item, not in a bulk vote. Jim, do you know whether we need to do this tonight, or whether we can put it on the next agenda as an agenda item?
We can put it out.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we table B solar pilot requests, and we put it on the next agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a weekly manifest and a raffle permit for the chamber. Okay, we have no appointments?
Do you like a motion to approve the rest of the bulk vote?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve bulk vote items A and C?
I'll second.
Yep, I'll second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is commercial vessel landing permit. This is for the Millie B.
This is a normal renewal?
Somebody here to...
Here we go.
Talk to it, there we go.
Hi, good evening, my name is Chip Bearwiler, I'm representing the New Hampshire Boat Museum, and I'm the manager of the Millie B. I'm here tonight to formally ask for your approval of the commercial docking permit again for the 2023 season. As you know, the Millie B draws a large number of riders every summer, and we provide an educational, informative, and fun experience for the riders of all ages, in line with the Boat Museum's mission to expose and educate the public to the wonders of boating in the lakes and surrounding area. We are a very popular summer tourist attraction, attracting visitors to the Wolfboro area, to tour the lake, as well as the various businesses and towns. Our captains and dock attendants provide great information to the general public on various questions as to where to eat, where to shop, my personal favorite, what times the mount come in. We also provide wedding charters and such to those that want to provide a special memory here in the area in Wolfboro. So with that, I would humbly request your consideration and our request.
How did you do this year? Was it a good year for boat?
We had our best year ever.
And I wanted to thank you for being so flexible when we had the Mount Washington event, actually staying, giving shorter and quicker rides to people, and...
Yeah, we had a lot of fun doing that.
And I know we were kind of in the way.
So, yeah, we had a lot of fun doing that.
And be ready for next summer, because we're going to do it again.
Mr. Chairman, the one thing that I would just add, hopefully, we won't run into any issues relative to the commercial dock repairs, which could cause problems next year if we do, we'll communicate that with the Boat Museum, but we're hopeful that that'll go off without a hitch, and we won't have any problems.
Yeah, if we did, if the commercial dock was delayed, we could make a spot on our recreational dock for them, so we would make sure they could still dock at the docks, okay?
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine, I just want to be clear that if we have any problems, we'll communicate that with them.
Okay.
Want a motion?
Yeah.
Move to issue a commercial vessel landing permit to the Millie B for the 2023 season.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck again. Okay, next on our agenda is Crescent Point Homeowners Association, River Street Speed Reduction.
Good evening, I'm Rick Krutoff, I'm representing the Crescent Point Homeowners Association and a few other homes which live on River Street. June Connors is our association president. River Street crosses the Rails to Trails path about 150 feet into the road. There is a sign for a speed limit of 30 miles an hour, roughly 50 to 100 feet before the trail. We in the association think that that is unsafe, and is a risk to people who cross the River Street on the trail, on bicycles, something in the winter, and we'd hate to be responsible for anybody getting seriously hurt or worse. The road has a small stop sign, the path rather, had a small stop sign for the people who are using the path. We cleared it with the people who run the path, and put in some larger signs, so that people should be more alert to stop. But we would like you to adjust the speed limit, so it's not the same as Route 28, 150 feet from the path, and please also consider putting a painted crosswalk for pedestrian right-of-way to cross that part of River Street, such as exists on the downtown Main Street. Thank you.
Anybody have some questions for him?
I thought the letter laid it very well.
I think you've already gotten some information from the town plan or Public Works.
Yeah, I think it's been sent on to Steve for his recommendations.
I think he's looked at it, he's been there.
Yeah. I don't know that we've heard back from him directly yet.
Do we have to go through a public hearing to do this?
I think we do, I've got to do some research on that with legal, and I think the other thing is, you know, relative to the sidewalk, I think there's a lot of other moving pieces, or crosswalk rather, if we were to do a crosswalk, there's a lot of other moving pieces that have to be done in advance, I believe.
Can I ask the captain a question kind of regarding, well, related to this? Are there other crosses across other roads on the trail? I've ridden the trail, and how many other roads are in the same situation as this neighborhood?
Sorry, I missed the beginning of this as something was going on outside.
On River Street, the rail trail goes by, and I've ridden the rail trail, and there is, there's a little sign that says, "Stop," and you have to be careful, and people slow down, but a lot don't stop, and aren't there other streets that...
There's a lot of private roads that...
That cross that.
Cross over there.
Now, River Street's a public road, right?
River Street is a public road.
Right, right.
Okay, so is this something that if we're going to do it in one place, should we kind of follow through and...
Yeah, yeah, I think you almost have, or she's, you almost have six or seven other roads, if you keep on going down all the way down.
Witneck.
Yeah.
Witneck's a little busy place.
But if those are in private roads, I don't know if we treat them the same, I know we do have a crosswalk painted on Railroad Ave where a cross is there, by the Dunedin Street parking lot.
Yeah, the only other public road I believe that would be on there would be...
Witneck.
Witneck is...
Oh, yeah, Witneck and further up on, oh, why can't I think of the road? Off 109 East though.
Bryant.
Bryant Road, it comes across.
Oh, yeah.
So, I think...
109.
And 109.
109, yeah, the state road, yeah.
So, just something to think about, and something to think about as we go forward and we do this, if we're going to set a plan for this, let's look at the plan that we set, so that it can be, it can be used in other situations, if we need to go that route.
Well, why don't we take a look at all those crossings on, you know, public ways, and decide, have the Public Works Director go out and decide, you know, what he thinks we should do there. I think this one is, you got a sign that says 30 miles an hour, just as you're coming into it, which has people pick up speed, so I'd like to see that the Public Works Director goes out, and we take a look at all those roads that are public, roads, and get a plan for all of them, and come in, and then we'll have to do a public hearing.
If you need my assistance with the public works, just let me know.
Yep.
Thank you very much, and I wouldn't have asked for the other roads to be done, but I think it's a great idea.
Okay, next on our agenda is Foss Field, pickleball upgrades, Ty &amp; Bond proposal.
So, you have in your packet a proposal from Ty &amp; Bond, we met Monday with the engineer from Ty &amp; Bond, the people from the pickleball group, myself, and Linda. As a result of that, we reached out to legal for guidance relative to what can, can't, should, should not, may or may not be done on that property. He turned around a legal opinion, which you have received, I believe it was last night, this morning, not sure which it was, and there's a lot of information in that opinion, I believe, to digest in conjunction with the supporting documents, but I think it's, it's something that obviously we need to discuss, and I don't feel comfortable in going forward with this report, or securing these borings, until the Board of Selectmen have an opportunity to discuss it, and make a recommendation on the future of that area. There's a lot of information there.
All right, and I would like to make a motion that we table this until we have looked into the information that we just got from legal counsel, to another time.
Second that, I also have sent to Amy, and was sent out to the board members, all the documents that I had found on Foss Field, so they should be in your email, that back up what's here.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Next, capital reserve funding, fire truck.
So, as you're aware, there's been a lot of moving parts relative to the contract with the ladder truck. While not perfect, I think we are in the best position that we possibly can be at this point. You have a memo from me, you should have some backup information in there, laying out various costs of various options, funds remaining in the capital reserve, the amended contract terms, and I had sent to you at some point over the past couple days, progress photos of the truck, showing that it's not very far from being done. Chief, it's all yours.
Thank you. The manager pretty well summed up how we got here, pretty well.
Excuse me, Tom, just state your name for the record.
Tom Zadi, fire chief.
Thank you.
Pretty well summed it up. As you're aware, the town was approached in July about a surcharge from the manufacturer. Since then, we have weighed a number of options, and have whittled them down to what you see before you tonight, which we believe is the most cost-effective and quickest way to effect delivery of the apparatus that we spec, and hope to be able to keep in service in town for the next 25 to 30 years. Be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Okay, so the amount of money we're talking about is $146,360, and that will get us a new fire truck here, am I correct?
In approximately 60 days from the signature of the amendment, yeah.
Okay.
And we also got one more year on warranty, which we figured was about, worth about $20,000, so it looks like we just about cut their initial request in half.
And on another note, I happen to be on a waiting list to get a Ford F-150 pickup truck, and that has gone up 12% since I put in the order for it. And the industry as a whole, the auto industry, since last year, about the same time that we signed on to build this truck, the auto industry is up 10 to 15% for all their vehicles. It's just the way it is.
Yeah, and again, I think it's fair to say that although none of us are happy to be here asking for this, it's the best alternative we have under the circumstances.
So, I'd like...
What we're going to do tonight is take money out of the pre-existing fire truck and apparatus capital reserve account in order to cover this, am I correct?
That is correct, and currently, there is a balance of 451... That is correct, and currently there is a balance of 451,300 and some change in that account. So we can, we can cover the expense. I think the chief and I can sit here and tell you we don't like it, but it is certainly the best option we have in front of us.
And as you may be aware from meetings with the CIP committee, we just happen to be going into a time period of a few years where we don't have a lot of significant purchases in the next few years, so we do have some time to recover that contribution to the CIP.
And just so people know, approximate timeframe?
Four.
To the delivery of this new truck?
We were told to expect a final factory inspection trip in approximately three weeks and delivery in about 60 days from the signature of, on the contract addendum, which presumably would be in a day or two if you folks make that motion tonight.
So, question. Could, if we get it in time, can you use it in the Christmas parade?
Wouldn't see why not. We do, based on how we got here, it will be delivered to the dealer in Massachusetts for some final fit-up work and lettering and things like that, and then it will be driven by them to Wolfboro, and we obviously will spend a lot of time going through it and so forth, and we don't exactly own it until we sign on, the town manager and myself sign on the dotted line that we accept it. So we will spend some time studying it very closely, as long as the timeframe works and we've accepted it by then, we'd be happy to take it in the parade.
That would be excellent.
And hand them the check. The check will be issued upon delivery and acceptance.
Okay, so somebody want to make a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the additional funds of $146,360 for the new ladder truck.
And I think we need on there to authorize the town manager to sign the contract.
Yeah, and the money's coming out of the capital reserve fund.
Yeah.
As far as the contract's concerned, no, this particular contract, I can sign. You can put it in the motion, but it's within my...
Okay, so we're understanding the capital reserve fund.
So from the, from the existing fire apparatus capital reserve fund and to issue the town manager to sign the contract.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Tom, for all your efforts. Next is the actual budget, September, through September.
Thank you, Casey.
So I stand before you to give you a snapshot of some of the financial items through September of 2022. Currently, we're at eighty, a little over 84%, which is 9% above a nine-month straight average of 75%. There are some areas of concerns, but we're holding off on spending here to cover the overages over there. I hope you noticed that we also attached a new report. It's like page seven and eight in this document. It is something that is prepared by someone in the finance staff and distributed to the department heads every month. It shows the gallons, gallons of diesel and gas and also the costs. The department heads have done a great job continuing to manage their usage, and that was at the directive of the town manager. The general fund revenue is currently at 61%, which is right on track. The big ticket still is the second tax bill, which we have not done. We are waiting on Department of Revenue. All the forms from the town have been submitted. I understand they're waiting for stuff from the Department of Education and the county, so we're just waiting. I do not have an estimate of when that's going to happen, but I keep asking. The water fund and sewer fund appropriations are a little trending low, but the projects are beginning to ramp up and definitely will probably carry over to the next year. So water fund is at 57%, sewer fund is at 46%, electric and pop whaling are right on target at 82 and 72%. Revenues are doing pretty good for the enterprise funds. Water fund is at 95%, which we would expect to see, and water charges are at 90%, electric at 79, pop whaling at 84, and sewer is at 51. Selectmen, Murray had asked last year, month, why our residential sales are low. I still don't have a full answer on that with you because that we're working with the engineers on that, and I hope to get back to you on that answer.
Okay, thank you.
I also, as I have in the past, given you the donation report, which there's been no changes, and the MS9, which is a list of all the capital reserve funds and the trust funds. Just remember that that's on a cash basis, so until that $146,000 you just spoke of is actually spent, that wouldn't be taken out of the numbers. The town manager, myself, and some of the vendors are actively reviewing any open projects, trying to button any up, so we don't have to carry them over to the next year if we don't have to. We're getting a better understanding on where we are. And then lastly, as you all know, but for the public, we've been actively working on budgeting for 2023 with the budget reviews from department heads to the Board of Selectmen. I do not have any financial concerns at this point, and I've been made, I have not been made aware of any, so if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy. And I guess for the record, Kathy Copentier, Finance Director, I didn't open with that.
I have a question. In the past, we used to, the Board of Selectmen used to sign a form which removed the money from the trust funds. Are you going to do that, or are we now just vote?
I've been doing it, but after a motion of the board, you know what I mean?
Okay, so you're filling, we no longer have to sign those requests.
Right, so I would attach the minutes. I'd say the minutes were done on this day, and then I make sure it was actually spent on whatever it was supposed to be spent on. So I guess I was unaware that that was a function you did. I've always done it in the past after your motion. I figured I had the authority to do that.
I, it's not, I just am used to getting them, and all of a sudden, we don't, I haven't had them, and so I thought I'd ask the question. As long as we can track it, I don't care.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Casey?
Not, we'll see you next month on this subject.
Next week.
And thank you for all you do.
Okay, next on our, on our agenda, building permit fees.
So Jason and Tavis were in front of you a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, I don't know, it kind of runs together at this point. They brought together a initial proposal for the building permit fees based on discussions, and they have an update for you, and they're here to discuss it.
All right, Jason Durant's Building Inspector. So I did look up Guilford, Center Harbor, and Meredith. Electrical, plumbing, and gas piping, they're all at 50. That's kind of where the trend is. Most towns that we looked up, it's all at 50. Where 25 is we're at the low end. As far as administrative fees for building permit reviews, those three do not charge any administrative review fee, but we're still, majority of the towns around us are still at that $30 review fee for the building permits. I looked Guilford, as far as what they charge for permits, there was very confusing the way that they do it, so I didn't attach, just to see the list, because it's many different variables on it. Everybody else is pretty straightforward like us. As far as charging for building permits, we don't have, really have an issue with we handle those, it's just the, what we charge for the individual permits, for gas piping, plumbing, electrical, and the administrative review fee. That's kind of where we were at.
To be clear, the administrative review fee, Tavis Austin, the administrative fee would not be applied to the gas, electric, and plumbing. They would just go to a straight 50. The administrative fee would only go for new construction, so new home, new commercial building, not the incidental permits. I just don't want anyone in the public to think that now their plumbing permit is $80. It would go from 25 to 50, but not to 80.
If that's what the board chooses, but that's where the trend is at 50 for those individual permits.
I have no problem with the $50 for the gas and electric permit. I'm still, from what I'm, see here, it says no administrative fees for building permits. That's in Ossepe, that's in Wakefield, that's in Moulton Borough, and that's us. Tufton Borough does 30, New Durham does 30, and Brookfield does none. And that's from the sheet you gave us last time, so I, and you didn't, you said all the ones you looked at, there wasn't any.
Most of them don't have an administrative fee, but most of those also charge more per square foot for new construction.
Correct. Yeah, so I'm wondering, when are we going to revisit that and see if we can keep houses that are under 2,000 or 3,000 square feet close to where they are now, but increase our fees on our larger 5,000, 6,000, 7,000, 8,000, 9,000, 10,000 square foot houses? We should have a graduated set of fees, because when, when you're approached with a plan for a 7,000 or 8,000 square foot house, there is way more work involved in, in looking at those plans, deciphering. I mean, if you have to look at, oh, if you have to look at five bathrooms, I can't say that it's, that it's the same as looking at a 1,000 square foot ranch.
There is more time spent on them, but the, but they are charged more accordingly to cover. It does equal out as far as reviewing, because it does...
As a percentage of what the cost of the project is, though, they, the large houses get off with a much less expensive inspection based on the cost of what their construction cost will be compared to a 1,000 square foot house.
Correct, but the statute allows the town to recoup the cost of the service provided. And the cost of service provided isn't relative to the expense of the house or the project. So just because a large house has a million dollars in site work before they start a million dollar house, that doesn't mean staff time is appreciably more than the 2,000 square foot house. So what we're trying to do is assign an appropriate fee to cover the administrative costs of processing the paper, having it go in the computer, and each house, as we discussed a year ago, starts out with 10 inspections, basically. That's the steps are going from a footing to a final, typically 10. Most of the building inspections that I did in between one leaving and Jason coming would call up and they would want a rough electrical, plumbing, and framing all at once. Dave's nodding, because that's what people want.
Pretty common, pretty common to do.
So, the $30 normalizes, if you will, the administrative costs as opposed to saying, well, this house is going to take two and a half more inspections than that house, or, you know, it really isn't related at all to the cost of the home or the expense of the project.
Well, some, some towns, I think Portsmouth is one of them, that does do it by the cost of the home. So there are, there, you know, there are more than...
Durham makes inspectors sit and count outlets.
Right.
Paid per outlet.
I hear what you're saying, you know, but, you know, I don't think this fee, the $30 fee is, is an issue. I mean, what you're saying, what you're saying is...
No, no, I don't think...
What you're saying is that people are building smaller homes, are getting, are getting hit harder for...
Correct.
Yeah, well, if you, that, if that's the way you feel, you should go after the impact fee, because that's, that's the biggest, that's the biggest detriment to people building small homes in Wolfboro, the impact fee.
Well, that is a piece too, but it is the inspections, it is the impact fee.
Yeah.
The $30, I'm with Linda, the $30, that $30 fee, if other communities don't really use it, I don't think it's necessary that we use it.
I'm not sure how, how you're weighing, what he, what I understand them saying is that we don't charge as much for all the other things where that administrative fee may be tied into, and they're recommending a straight administrative fee to cover the office work to put this out, and I...
What we're suggesting is that it really doesn't matter what the house or project is, the inspection and the time is about the same.
I, I understand that, but I, other towns do not have administrative fees from the list you gave us. What your justification was, that you see that as covering our administrative work, and you believe that the other towns covered in the fees that they're charging. Am I correct?
At least in that sense, yes. Remember, when we started this a year ago, we brought down, you know, it was 100% of the building inspector code enforcement officer, with or without benefits, 70% of the administrative staff, and 10% of the planning budget. That is literally what the statute is set up to cover, but those fees scared people. But...
We don't want to charge that amount.
Correct.
When, when my...
Instead, what we did, your suggestion, your collective suggestion, was to go back and say, how do we actually come up with something that draws the line between what it costs and what we're providing? And the recommendation is the $30 does that, provided the ancillary permits are also...
I'm, I'm still under the mindset, if, if I register a $30,000 car, I pay less than if I register an $80,000 car.
Yes. I'm not saying that is an appropriate system either. But I...
So...
I don't have to...
If, if I, if I insure a $30,000 car, I pay less than if I insure an $80,000 car. So I still, I'm, I'm stuck with the mindset that a larger project should be assessed, or, or the fees should be a graduated fee, and they should pay more relative to a smaller property.
Would you also agree that the inspection fee is the same for both vehicles? Because that's what we're addressing here. We're not building it, selling it, housing it, driving it, or using public infrastructure to do it. So the premise here is we're getting a vehicle inspection, a home inspection, so that's the idea.
Okay. All right, so I think the next step is a public hearing to approve...
So, yeah, I mean, I think that what we need to hear is, do you want to bring this model forward to a public hearing, or is there another model that you want us to visit? I think Brian's made it clear that he would like another model, but I don't know what the board wants, and this is a collective body, and we can go the direction you, so tell us to go.
Well, I would like to see firstly, the whole thing on a sheet of paper now. Your administrative fee, your permit fees...
Updated fee schedule.
The fee schedule, you know, plumbing, electrical, gas, what you're charging per square foot of value. I'd like to see it all now on one sheet. We've got sheets going all over the place.
Before, after, side by side, we can do that.
Yeah, I want to see what you're charging now and what you anticipate, along with permit fees now, what they could be, and then I think we, then, then we can understand and have a public hearing so we can see it side by side. That's my feeling.
Are you asking that we see that prior to setting a date?
Yes.
For a public hearing?
Yep.
And I guess my feeling is that we may want to go back, as Brian was saying, and take a look at those other fees that you brought forward. I would feel comfortable going...
Why, if we have them side by side, I think we make a better decision, from my perspective.
Okay, I can do it that way. I just want to make sure that we, I'm comfortable going ahead and looking at these and looking at it side by side, but I don't want to, not, I think Brian had some good ideas, I want to make sure we incorporate that, so...
So would it be fair to say that if we came forward to this board, I'm just looking at the calendar right now, on November 3rd, with those documents in planning for a public hearing on November 17th?
Yep.
Does that work?
Work for me.
Well, if we don't like something...
We can just...
You can leave, leave it...
Continue the meeting, or the public hearing until a date certain, right?
Okay.
It, it, it just, it becomes problematic with the noticing in the papers based on print dates and whatnot, that's all.
We need to make sure we use the correct wording in the notice to be able to discontinue...
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm, that, that does it so it's set up so that if we get to it, I don't want to be, look at it on the 3rd and then not have some issues that we've already scheduled a public hearing. I want to be able to have some of that flexibility, and I'm sure Brian does too.
So do we push it to December 1st, then?
That would give us two meetings to...
That would give us two meetings to look at it once, and if we don't make changes, the second meeting before.
I think that, I, I think then we would.
Get us squared away on that first meeting and then have plenty of time to.
Yep.
Yeah, I think I like that, Brad. Yeah, I think that.
Yes, my question is documents, because I understand the side by side building from a fee schedule. I don't know what the other document is.
I can work with you on that, Tavis. I think, I think I understand.
Because to be clear, the goal is not to be able to, I'll say, collect more money from higher end projects than lower end projects. That's not the way the statutes work.
Oh, I understand that, but as we look at it, there may be other adjustments that we want to make and have the flexibility to have the time to do that. That's, because we're going to look at it side by side, and somebody may decide, have another idea, and that gives you one more time to.
Two weeks to figure it out and.
Yeah, yeah.
Four, four weeks instead of two to.
Okay. Any other questions for them at this point? See you on the 3rd.
We're next.
You'll see us next meeting, and then on 3rd.
Yes.
Okay, next on our, on our agenda is a trash ordinance.
You should have in your packet a memo, adding Article 3 to the ordinance, Chapter 112. Chapter 112 is peace in good order. About the only place in the town regulations that mention littering or anything of that general common nature, if you will. So Article 1 is littering, where this, the town adopted state laws regarding littering. Article 2 has some information about town docs. Based on the discussion at the last meeting on this topic, I'm suggesting Article 3, trash cans and receptacles. You can debate the weighty items such as trash cans and receptacles, or slash receptacles, or just trash receptacles. But at the request of the board, the suggested language is 112.4. No person shall place a trash can or similar receptacle at curbside or roadside overnight. And that's just a public hearing away from moving forward, unless there's other changes.
It seems simple, and addresses the thing we wanted, which was just minor. And I, I like it. Nice job.
Okay.
So.
Are we setting a public hearing for that?
Can get that ball rolling, if that's what.
If you're not aware, we'll be here on the 3rd, on the 17th, and probably the 1st, so it's up to you.
See you a lot.
Should say, or household.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda. Do we have to go into a separate meeting for this, Jim?
We have the CIP.
Yeah, we do. CIP presentation.
He's back.
Good evening, Kathy Barnard. I'm. Okay, I'm here on, on behalf of the Planning Board, along with Tavis, to submit to you the 2023 to 2032 Capital Improvements Program. This was reviewed by the Planning Board last night at a public hearing and passed unanimously. This advisory plan is prepared yearly to serve as a guide for the Board of Selectment and the Budget Committee during the discussion of the 2023 budget. The plan was developed by the Planning and, uh, Planning Board CIP Committee after discussions with the Town Manager, the Director of Finance, and Department Heads. We want to thank the Town Manager, the Finance Director, and the Department Heads, as well as the members of the committee, and that's Linda Murray from the Board of Selectment. Brian Duchesne was the alternate, Bob Bloman from the Budget Committee, and then citizen representatives, Paul Whalen, Chuck Sumner, Suzanne Ryan, Tim Cronin, and Dennis Farrell as an alternate, and also Mike Harder from the Planning Board, all for their valuable input and the time that we all spent on this. This 10-year plan is for municipal projects over $100,000. These projects are spread out considering the needs of the town, the town department heads and the impact on the taxpayers. Also, there are several capital reserve accounts. These are accounts added to yearly to show, to, again, to lessen the burden on the taxpayer. Included in this information is a list of the 2023 projects. The total of these projects is over $27 million. However, many of the projects included are ballpark figures. Others will only go ahead if grants and other funding sources are available. A spreadsheet at the end of the document includes all the known projects spread out over the 10-year period. And so Tavis will go over details of the plan. Thank you.
Hello again. Still Tavis. The bulk of this document should look fairly familiar to you from previous years. Couple of things I do want to point out. Page 4, this is the first time in several years that the Planning Board has put its own guidance into the document. Remember, the Board of Selectment adopted guidelines, the Planning Board also put in a guiding statement. And other things that were added for clarity is on page 5, are the three criteria that the CIP use when considering projects, whether they're going to go into the CIP, how, what, why, and when, et cetera. There is some discussion on financing on there. As Kathy said, they're ballparks. Some of the ballparks are much larger than others as far as accuracy, but a lot of that accuracy also depends on projects that are looking out in time. Two things I want to point out, unless there are project-specific questions, because a question was raised at the Planning Board last night, so I assume other people may have similar questions. The Governor Wentworth School District, the timing did not work out for a formal presentation to CIP. So that's why you see that on page 12 without a committee vote. Understood that that's an annual fund. It's not really a CIP project because it's under $100,000. But people are used to seeing that referenced in the CIP document, particularly the spreadsheet. As well, right under that is the Town Manager with the Public Safety Building at $12 million. While you are all well aware of where that number is or may be, the $12 million is what people are used to seeing on CIP from previous years, so that was kept just to keep people from forgetting about it, quite frankly. Kathy mentioned the 2023 Project Summary totaling $27,811. And I'm bringing up that number not because I think you missed it the first time, but when you look on the spreadsheet, the number doesn't jive. Because the 2023 Projects List includes capital reserve fund contributions and others that aren't calculated the same way in the spreadsheet. So with that, if you look at the spreadsheet, it does call out the total for CIP projects for each of the years from 2023 to 2032. It is suggestive on how many of the projects will be funded, but that list is primarily based on who provided, you know, which department provided the project form. Many of those projects are multifaceted. Maybe they're covered by water, sewer, and revolving loan, or bond, or grant, or what have you. And that, one of the key changes down on the bottom of the spreadsheet, about the bottom middle of the page, is a section that calls out from the greater number, the capital reserve funds. So I believe it's $775,000 in capital reserve fund contributions. And then just above that, this year, the CIP Committee wanted to be sure that, you know, I guess they were doing their due diligence. You'll notice projects not recommended, so not all projects that are submitted to CIP make it into the CIP plan. One this year received that honor of sorts, if you will, $140,000. That was separated out from the list, because otherwise the numbers just become more confusing. So if there's questions on particular projects, this is updated on the website already, and questions I can answer.
I have one, Linda, maybe you can help me with this too. The, under Electric Fund, it says Engineering Design and Bio, and Bid Services for Melody and Kenniston Island. And, and for 2023, it's $50,000, and I thought that that was joined with something else.
It's, it's, it is included, and the next year is the construction. That's what it is.
Yes, the actual.
The project is on the following year. That, and the reason they put the $50,000 in is if you add the two projects together, it's over $100,000, and so that is it. And then you go down with all the other projects.
It's not actually a $50,000 ask. That's $50,000 of existing revenue that would go towards the $540,000 project.
But it's part of this. It is, it is an ask in here. The other thing I'd like to make comment about was the Public Safety Building, and I think the Town Manager did an excellent job when he presented it to the CIP. He came in first with three options and estimated costs for those three options. And then as we narrowed in, he came in with the $12,000 based on where he believes the committee was going. And so it was a moving target, and he became clearer as the process went forward, but he couldn't be as clear as he wanted. I want to also say, and I think the CIP Committee did an excellent job of dealing with it, and the Town Manager trying to wrestle it in, we had a change in staff. And so getting all these projects together and getting them well-defined was a challenge, I think, for all of us. And I think all of us on the committee and with the Town Manager did an excellent job getting that done.
Thank you.
I'm glad you feel we're comfortable in the clarity of the projects. Some days, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure Jim was comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Do you like a motion to go into a meeting as the trustees of the Libby?
Yes.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
The House on Paper.
Aye.
So, we haven't had really an opportunity to talk much regarding the proposed business plan brought forward by the Friends of the Libby Museum. You all have had time to review that. There's been some documents that have come forward that outline some concerns, and some potential adjustments that may need to be made or discussed about the, the Phase 1 going forward. With that said, I, I think this is a good opportunity for the trustees to speak regarding this and the direction where the trustees would like to head, both in the short term and the long term.
I'd just start out too by saying that the Friends Group would like to, you know, hear what all our comments are, obviously. They'd like to get somehow in, in written form something like that so they could review them, and then get together to sit down with us to discuss where our, I'm sorry, differences, but things that we want to, you know, discuss as far as the individual items go and stuff, which I think is probably a pretty good approach and stuff to take. So just want to kind of put that out there. That's kind of the format that they're, that they're looking for and looking at and stuff here, so.
I think that's the way we have to do it. I have, you know, you received in the packet the areas where I had concern. And I think we can identify pages and paragraphs and talk about what doesn't work for us and/or we need to reword, and then have it clear to them and give them a chance to look at it. So I don't know how you want to go through this. Dave? Shall we go page by page? Section, I, I went through and went by like one executive summary, and then I wrote what I had issues with. And then two is mission and vision, and just kind of went through in that manner.
Okay, it doesn't matter. Do you want to go through it page by page? Or just, if somebody has an issue with something, just bring it up?
Well, I would kind of think if we went through it item by item, like, you know, under the content here, there are 1 through 13, kind of, you know, do number 1, any comments on that? We could get them written out together, then go to number 2, 3, 4.
Yep.
Kind of keep it in order that way, maybe easier to track and keep us from jumping around all over the place and stuff, so, in my opinion.
I, I would, I can, I'm willing to start off with the executive summary. It was the fifth paragraph that I had an issue with, and it states that the operations of the museum would not increase the costs or the taxes for the town of Wolfboro. And I'm not quite sure how we verify that. There would be a need to verify that they could raise that sum of money so it wouldn't. I wouldn't want to go out and say on a Warren article that that was going to happen if we don't have any guarantee. And, and I don't understand. They tell us that this is a vision for years 1 through 5. I don't know what the vision is for 5 through 10. So that was my issue in that section.
I'll go out, I'll go next on that. I, you know, I think, you know, overall, I, I didn't have really too much of a question on the executive summary. When I was reading your comments, though, Linda, too, I, one thing came to mind was, you know, asking about to verify or guarantee the cost increase stuff. My thought on that was, maybe we're talking about taking over the, the cost, the operating costs of the building, not staffing and stuff like that. And with the way, obviously with heating going and stuff like that, I'm not sure if there's, could be any kind of a guarantee, you know, you know what I mean? You know.
Yeah.
I kind of get what they're going at, you know, they're, you know, they're thinking that, you know, based on the numbers they had back in 2019, that, you know, they came up with a, Alba came up with a cost to operate, physically operate the building and stuff with the addition and stuff like that. They're basically on those figures there and relating it to the budget at the time. And I don't know how to move beyond that with forecasts, you know, I don't know.
See, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to say increase costs or taxes. What I think they're saying is they're willing to take on the management, the staffing.
Right.
That section, and, and do they have the capacity to raise that every year? That's my, I don't want to make that other statement, because as you say, I don't think it's real.
Yeah, yep.
But I think they, they were, I heard them saying, we'll take the, over the management
Right.
of the museum, and then the rest of it is, we've got to figure out.
Right.
I have a problem with, or not a problem, but a concern with the bottom of chapter, I mean, paragraph 2 under Executive Summary where it says, "This plan may be used to underpin a lease operating agreement between the partners for the first phase, year 1 to 5." And that just, that statement is, the plan may be used? So is there going to be a lease agreement? Is there not going to be a lease operating agreement? It's, it's only for year 1 to 5? Then, then what happens after year 1 to 5? Does something else change? So it's just very, very kind of loose. Do you know what I mean? This plan may be used to underpin a lease operating agreement. It might not be either, so. So I, I would like some clarification there, what their thinking was for that.
I think that's when I said, then what happens on 5, 10? Where are they planning to go? You know, I would like more than.
And what would that lease operating agreement look like? What, what is, they, it's their idea, so they must have a plan of what that would look like.
I think that was kind of when I was saying the management part of it, and get away from saying it, there's not going to be any other increases. That's the piece they're willing to do, and can they. That's the piece they're willing to do, and can, to me, do they, and can they raise the money yearly in order to cover that?
Is that something we want to follow, follow up on?
I think so. I think we need to follow, follow up on, you know, getting the wording, no increase to the taxpayer out of there, because I don't think that's realistic, and define the...
Yeah, because we don't, five to 10 years from now?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Who else is going to know what's going on? I think we're lucky to get one to five out of it.
We, we don't want to leave a problem for somebody else 20 years down the road. Look where we are right now.
Yeah. All right, what would you like to do with that? Call it over some more, or?
Well, I think we kind of put out what our comments were. I think, you know, the look to is get these comments forwarded to the Friends group, and then they can...
Come back.
Come back and with ideas and...
Okay, so on the executive summary, we want to know what their intention is, five to 10? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, and I like the words, increase costs or taxes, that there aren't, it's not going, I don't think that's an accurate statement we want. They're going to take over the management, they talk about the management, we need to know whether they can raise the money for the management, but we're not ma, they should not make any statement about the taxpayer not having to pick up any more funds.
And I want to see what their lease and operating agreement, what they anticipate that to be, what, what's their thought process on that?
Okay. Anything else on the one? Two?
I do. On number two, I, I felt that this was the mission that they put down here, is the mission of the Friends of the Libby, and I think the mission for the trustees comes out of the will, is to ensure that the Libby Museum continues to be a museum of natural history for the present and future generations. That's how it was given, we took ownership of it. The rest of this is their vision of what they would like to see happen, and it's fine for their vision, but I don't think it's our vision.
Okay. Any other comments on that? We agree that they word it that way? Okay, target audience? Number three?
I can...
I think what Lynda wrote in that one, I thought those were not 100% all that information broke there was what I, that what I thought about, too, was where, you know, what's left if they're going to have events and stuff like that. We're going to have parking issues there anyways going into the future, and identifying where the actual parking spots are, because there, there's, you know, there's not much land there, and the parking spots across the street are, you know, four, or five, or six spots total, so.
Yeah, I think having some kind of a parking plan on that, on the permit application there, so that, you know, they look into, you know, whatever's events going on there, if there's 30 or 40 people going in or whatever, they look at, you know, the trolley or some other way to...
Yeah, we talked about that before.
People in and out of there, or the boats, or, you know, the, you know, anything to bring people in or, you know, to deliver them to the facility.
So that we've, we're going to have to reword that in order to address the parking?
Yeah, so the question could be, you know, that, you know, we need to have the permit application with options and parking plans, you know, attached. I don't know if we have that in our normal permit for, well, application permits now.
If the event is inside, they don't need a temporary event permit. It's for the outside events, you know, like, we, the town, am I, am I correct on this, Jim? That if I am the children's center and I have an event inside my building, I don't need to get a special event permit even though people in the public might come?
That's my understanding, so that, you know, like, for example, the mum sale, you know, they come forward with that, but, you know, I don't think, I don't believe so, Lynda. And, you know, I, I do have one of the parking plans that was proposed. One of those outlines 19 parking places plus five boat, or vehicle and trailer parking, and that was one of the plans. There's multiple out there, but it seemed like the maximum parking was right in that 20 to 23 range.
Well, and there's also, I think there's six or seven across the street. The, the five with the boat trailer would have to, um, thank you, would have to be built.
Right.
We don't have that built. What we can see right now are the, it may be up to eight across the street and the 19 that are there, and that's all the capacity for parking, because the board made Lang Pond Road no parking. So if they're going to do that, they're going to run an event, they're going to have more than X number of cars, they've got to bring them in by boat or trolley.
Well, I, I think if you go up there and read those signs on Lang Pond, it says no trailer parking. Doesn't say no parking.
I will check, we should check that. I think it's a no parking area.
I can't remember.
I don't can either. I thought it was no parking.
No. It says no boat trailer parking.
Well, it should be in our organs. We need to check that.
That needs to be checked.
Yes, it does. You're absolutely right, it needs to be checked. Of course, I'd never make a mistake.
No. None of us do.
No.
Right? Okay, four. Seems pretty simple, but five.
This one was the, I had issues with the collection, who, who governs the collection? And what part of the collection is our responsibility, and what part of the collection was the Friends of the Libby Museum? And in the past, the Friends of the Libby Museum used to raise money to help with the collection. So I think that we need to define each entity's roles, and I am not supportive of the waterfront being governed by anybody but the Board of Selectmen. I think that's...
Agreed.
It should remain under the control of the board.
I had that same note, too, that, um, to, you know, I think we actually did already establish a capital reserve fund for the shorefront. If I'm not mistaken, when we enacted our fees there, but to have that, so the fees from that go into that, that account there, which is to maintain the seawall, the dock, and the ramp and stuff, moving forward, I agree, I think, you know, that needs to be separated out, and shorefront, under the, you know, direction of the trustees here. And we might want to check into the legalities of that, too, if we can separate out these, the back, you know, the museum property and the shorefront property, the way the trust is set up in the will and stuff.
We're not, we're not separating, well, they're all still under us.
True.
Not taking, getting rid of any of that responsibility. My understanding, the only thing we're talking about is them managing the staff.
Got you, yeah.
We're still on for the grounds, the building and everything else, and so I think we should keep managing the waterfront, and that while we talk about them, it is the other side of the street, and it's the parcel, or it's a section of the land that the museum is on.
Do we hire all the staff for the museum? Even volunteers? Are we in charge of volunteers, part-time staff, everything?
Do we have a list of the volunteers?
Do we have a list of volunteers? There were, you haven't had any volunteers over the past two years. Thank you, Lena.
Okay. Organizational management?
I'd like to change the chart. I think that the Friends of the Libby, I mean, the trustees of the Libby and the selectmen should be on top, and then underneath it should be the Board of Selectmen, and then the Friends of the Libby off to the, off to the side. They would report to the town manager. I don't think the Friends of the Libby, because we're talking about that, the management of the Libby, and that should, to me, would be under the Board of Selectmen. I mean, under the town manager. This way, it looks like the Friends of the Libby are a little bit lower, and we do the communication, they communicate with us, and I think we generally want them to come to us through the town manager. That's what's my, I don't know how, I don't feel about that.
So the director of the museum should...
Did you see the chart?
The director of the museum should have direct communications with the town manager?
Correct. I, I, if, if we're going to maintain the staff, I firmly believe that the director of the museum should be a direct report to the town manager.
And we don't know where this is going yet, because we don't know if they're going to be running all the inside operations or not. We don't know if they're, are they going to be hiring the, a new director if they choose to? So these are unanswered questions.
Well, if they take what they have proposed, that they take on the management and hire the staff and do everything in relationship to the staff, and I think that's what's the daily museum operation, that's their proposal.
Right.
Do we want the Friends of the Libby communicating with us, or do we want the Friends of the Libby Museum communicating us through the town manager? Or what, you know?
Well, if the museum's reporting to him, then everything else should go through him to us.
That's, that's, that's my feeling, is where it should go. Or we start getting somebody going over somebody else's. That's what it looks like to me.
We have enough issues about that.
So I just, we just need to lower this section down to here.
And I can work with the current director to come up with a, to get you an organizational chart that, with a couple different options, I guess is the best way to put it.
Okay.
And I think also when we come into this, the back on the other section, in some place we're going to need and need to look at public parking apart from the museum. Are we going to get the parking space, are the public spaces going to be across the street, which are now labeled for the museum? So that's that parking plan again.
Okay, anything else? Okay, is there anything else as far as the Libby?
Just going to go down, I don't have anything else. Pricing.
Page eight under pricing. I think that when they're looking at some of the operations of the museum, they're looking at some of the pricing of the museum, I think they need to look to the only other museum close to this, that's like this, that's near us, and that's the Woodman Museum in Dover. They have a natural history museum. We keep, they keep telling us, they have the only natural history museum in, in the whole state in New Hampshire. The Woodman Museum in Dover has a, a natural history museum. They have a, a Dover History Museum, they have a Natural History Museum, they have rates that they charge, they have a time of the season that they're open, they've done renovations in the past. They operate in a town, they do operate with donations and, and a lot of private fundraising, but I think it would be good for them to look towards that museum for, for some of, of the information going forward. I'd be willing to take a road trip if everybody, if anybody wants to go down next spring and take a look at the museum.
In your new truck?
Yeah.
On number eight, the site assessment and policies, this has to be corrected. On page 11, it has all the wrong ordinance again, and statements about the, the dock.
Yeah.
That needs all to be corrected, and so it...
Well, I, and I talked to Pat Waterman, and what happened was, they had just mailed out the ordinance changes right before the Libby Museum pulled the information, so they used the most current information, but they haven't used the updated information.
Well, it doesn't matter, this, in this, it needs to be corrected.
Correct.
Okay, the other thing is in this financial plan, that it, they do the construction, and then there's a year in which the museum isn't being opened. It doesn't make sense to me why you would not open the museum one of the years. Whether we, it says...
So I think that really hinges on us hearing back from Bowencorp, Alba, as to, you know, what is the schedule for construction going to look like, and hopefully we'll get that here within the next few days.
And the reason I make that statement is they already have PR going out saying that they're not going to be open...
Correct.
...the year after construction. So we need to clarify that, and who gets to call whether it's open or not.
So I have an issue. In the executive summary on, on paragraph two, it says that the trustees as stewards are responsible for the care and maintenance of the property and its rare collection, but then on page 10, under collection, it, it talks about how the Friends have funded collection purposes, restoration since 89, and it's been funded through grants and donation. In recent years, the Friends have gifted these items, a full-size moose, blah, 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 blah. So in that, they're saying that they're, that they've been doing all this. In the front, they say that we're in charge of it. I'd like it clarified that we are going to be in charge of the collection 100%. That's what they've said, and I want everybody to understand that maintaining the collection costs more than operating the museum. We had the gentleman from Yale People's Museum come here and tell us that. Storing it, caring for it, restoring artifacts as they degrade, that's going to be an expensive portion of, of running this museum. And it's not very clear when they talk about it in two different ways in this document.
I think also, you know, the risk assessment was done by the Friends of the Libby Museum, and we may not necessarily agree with all this in that. I didn't go through each one, but we may not see the threat the same way they did. And we dealt with the issue of the impact to the taxes. I am 100% in support of them establishing an endowment and trying to raise a million dollars. I think that is the way for this to move forward. Then it got, it came to all their budgets, and I, I have no way of knowing whether these are realistic. It's really something the KC would know better to go through. It looks like, you know, they're going to have to raise around, well, I imagine things will change 30-plus thousand dollars a year.
Oh, the only other thing is, I think that we should have, like every other thing that happens in town, I think we should have a monthly accounting of, of, at least, maybe during the, the summer months. In the winter months, when it's just sitting idle, maybe they can do differently, but I'd like to know, I mean, is there anything else in, in town that we don't look at except once a year and say, oh, how, how'd it go? No, we, we get financial statements on everything on a monthly basis. Why is theirs going to be just by the end of the year? So all of a sudden, we have a surprise, especially the first couple of years, because we're going to be in uncharted waters. And all of a sudden, the first year goes by and they go, oops, this is where we are, and we're like, oh, nice, nice to know that. So I think that at least in the first couple of years, that we should have a, probably a monthly accounting from them, so we know how things are shaking out.
In 11, and on page 18, it says the staff costs shift to the Friends of the Libby Museum for year two. So they're not going to do it in the first year, and that's the year I think they're thinking it's going to be closed, from being previously covered by the town's annual operating budget. budget. And then the next one says the town's operating budget would remain at 2021 level for the care of the property and its collection as the Libby trustees. So there we're back. Who's got that collection? And it's in their own...
Yeah. And how are we going to maintain a larger collection in a bigger museum for the same amount of money as in 2021?
Well, that's... That is the issue. We're not... They're not... And to say that there's no increase to the taxpayers is not going to be...
No. We need a little clarification.
So we also would need to figure out where we're going to go in the following year.
So I think to kind of sum up where we're at here on these pages 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17, those five years, I'd say we probably want to sit down and have them explain to us how they arrived at the budgets that they came up with, so we understand what their philosophy is, what they're looking at, and what their expectations are and stuff, and vice versa, really, so we understand them, they understand us.
And I'd like KC to take a look also and see how reasonable it is.
That's exactly what I was just going to say. Could we have KC... I know she's really busy, but could she look at their numbers, and maybe something will come out in her eyes and say, well, this is glaring. This is unusual.
Yeah. I don't think that's an unreasonable ask. You know, the only thing I would caveat that with is, it's going to be a few weeks.
Well, it can be a few weeks. But you've got the startup pre-opening, Friends, on page 13. You're going to have staff, but it's not going to be open. So I'm not quite sure. I would like clarity on what they're talking about in the first year.
Anything else, Brad, from you?
No. The only comment I would have on that, on year one, the way I kind of interpreted this was that as year one, we'd be putting together our normal budget, because obviously not knowing until March whether this would pass or not. Because if it doesn't pass, then it would continue on under the normal, you know, the budget that we'd prepare for, like we do now. If it does pass, the museum's closed for renovations, then obviously, that money would not get spent in that way. I mean, there'd be some costs for utilities and stuff going on in there, but staffing wouldn't be happening and stuff. So that would end up being, you know, a non-spend type thing, which would get returned back to the general fund. So I think what their thought process was, that it's kind of a fallback. In case it doesn't pass, then the museum can stay open still, and it's funded for that year. Does that make sense?
I guess I didn't read it that way. So that's why I want clarity.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't read it. I had read it that there was going to... We'd be done with construction in one year they would take, just to get the museum ready. It wouldn't open. They'd have the staff and everything. And in year two, it would open to the public.
Yeah. So I'm interpreting it as year one being the construction year itself, that it's closed. So that's okay. Clarity is what we need then, yeah.
Well, that's the clarity. I think we interpreted it in two different ways.
It'd be pretty hard to keep it open
Yeah.
when it's up in the air.
Yeah. And if you're doing construction, we'll put that in our budget. It wouldn't be anything to do with our agreement with them.
Right.
We cover it. This is a part of the agreement. So we just need clarity on that.
Yep.
Hey, you all set with that?
Yep.
Jim? Okay. A motion to come out of our trustees meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Next is other business. Do you have any other business?
I have one crazy suggestion. Are you ready? I've been talking to people that say that the garbage cans down at the town docks are problematic all the time. They fill up, they, you know, they have to empty them a lot, so on and so on. I had a... I did a little research and looking around. They do make compacting garbage cans. Some of them are solar-powered, some of them are not. And what they do is, if the can gets to a certain layer in the top, it automatically crushes it down. The problem is that it does make the bags heavier when they have to empty them. The good thing is, whoever's been down there, have you ever seen the garbage cans to the top flowing all over the ground? It happens during the summer. Our crews do take care of them like clockwork and are fantastic every morning, but in the busy months, it does have an issue. I don't know if it's something that we could ever look at and have the two or three, the bigger ones, at the town docks. Keeps the garbage from going into the water when they overflow?
I think Dave Ford brought it up one year. I think there was a proposal for a compacting trash can that was...
Maybe Brian could check into that.
$3,000.
I don't know what they are. I don't know if they're...
Maybe you could get one donated.
We break...
Good.
We right now have somebody collect, I think it's in the afternoon. I think they're two times a day, I think in the morning and the afternoon. But you'd have to do the cost analysis
Yeah.
to know whether it would, you know, it's something we could phase in or exactly...
It's just something that somebody mentioned to me, and I'm like, they said, you know, those trash cans are always full, and if they... The stuff falls out of them, and we see it blow into the water and stuff. And I'm like, so I was just playing with the idea.
Well, anytime I've been down there, I thought they've been taken care of pretty well.
The only time I see...
It's usually our crew is in there first thing in the morning.
Yeah. And they do an excellent job, but sometimes the barrels do fill up. When you have people coming in with the boats, you know what they do with their boat trash. Their boat trash, a lot of times, ends up in those buckets can fill up quickly.
That's partly what they're there for. Okay. Any other business? Committee reports. Brian?
Three budget hearings, a CIP, an EDC meeting we're having, and it's been advertised on November 10th, from 5:00 to 7:00, in the Great Hall. We're going to be having a year-end wrap-up for the businesses in town. Linda and I have gone to almost every single business in town and passed out invitations for them to come to an event with hearty hors d'oeuvres and beer and wine, to have a roundtable discussion of the business environment in Wolfboro, and for businesses to talk to each other and to see if the EDC can assist them with next summer, depending on how they thought this summer went. So it's going to be a real nice event. I had an energy committee meeting this morning, and we had a speaker, Josh Elliott, from the Department of Energy, come. And he told us of all the grants that are available, it was mind-numbing. All the grants that are coming in with the new Infrastructure Act and with the previous one, where there's money still available. He's going to be forwarding a spreadsheet to us. There was talk at that meeting about what I mentioned the other day, that it would be nice if the town of Wolfboro had just a grant officer, one person that was just... Because it is mind-numbing, how many grants are out there that department heads might not know of. But if we had a grant officer, they could end up paying their salary, just in the money that they save the town, writing grants for all the different departments. So it's just a thought. I also had to go down to Manchester, and I presented at the New Hampshire Clean Energy Conference. And they asked me to come down and speak on our EV chargers and how they were working, and what the challenges, the hurdles, and the fine points of our EV chargers. They liked it enough that they want me to go back and speak before the Municipal Association. So I'll be doing that in November, too. But it was a nice conference. That's all.
I had a police commission meeting today. Tomorrow, we have the Public Safety Building Meeting. That's all I have to report.
Okay. I attended the first meeting of the Sherret Advisory Committee. We got to kind of know each other, and we'll be meeting again next month. I went to one Friends of Pop Whalen. I've had a number of meetings with the library trustees. I went to the Chamber Monthly Board Meeting. I attended, and so did Brian, the Route 28 PAC meeting to discuss the alternatives for the different intersections to be presented by the state at a public hearing for the residents of Wolfboro. The project will go from just about Pleasant Valley Road down to Pickering Corner. They'll have the options for Pickering Corner. They have not set the date, but that will be coming, and we hope to get a lot of people there. I met with Jim, as he said earlier, with the Pickleball Club. I also attended that EDC meeting, and one of the things that I... Brian and I told the businesses when we went around, that we were giving them something and not coming to ask for something. And they were pleased that we were willing... We were doing that, that we were going to put on a gathering for them. I went to the Wolfboro Waters Assessing Subcommittee meeting. And then yesterday, I went to the Wolfboro Waters meeting, and we met with Christine, Bo, and Steve to discuss stormwater runoff at Albee Beach and the need for an engineer to design a solution. We also talked about Brewster Beach and the need to understand what the stormwater runoff is taking place at either one of those beaches, instead of just dumping in sand. So that went very well. And I also attended a CIP meeting.
Okay. As Brian mentioned, we've been having budgets every other day. That's been interesting. They're very well-done this year. And there is a forum coming up next Tuesday night, 7:00 to 9:00, here at the Town Hall, for the different people running for different offices. So, Brad?
Yeah. Last night, we had a planning board meeting. Really interesting. We were presented with a conceptual plan for the renovation project of the old Sennell Building on Lena Street. It's kind of interesting to see some thoughts on that and stuff. They'll be coming back later on, another month or two, probably, to present something more detailed. As with everybody else, we've had all the budget meetings for the past couple of weeks. Wolfboro Community TV meeting this morning, and one of the main topics of discussion was that, and wanted to announce, we're going to be having our annual meeting on December 21st. And we're really going to be reaching out to invite a lot of people to it, you know, obviously, the local board here would be invited. We're going to reach out to the other, Governor Wentworth Regional School District towns that we're trying to establish a relationship with, to get in on, be able to watch, you know, some of the high school stuff, sports, and concerts, things that their kids would be in on and stuff. Going to reach out to underwriters that are currently with us, past ones, and future ones that we would hope to see what the TV station could do for them. So kind of a, you know, promoting and putting a word out there, what's available to the community out there for that. So just want to get a little plug-in on that for everything. So Mary was obviously there, running the meeting for us. And then we also, was it a week or so ago, we met myself, Jim, Steve Randall, Tavis, and the engineers from Stan Tech, met to have a discussion on private roads, policies for, you know, town taking them over, and, you know, inspections and that kind of stuff. So those things are being worked on now, too. So, and that was it for me.
Brad, when is the public hearing on the zoning ordinance? It's in November, isn't it?
I believe it's going to be the second... Was it the second meeting in November, John? Oh, it was Kathy. Yeah. Yep.
So it's November 8th? No, it wouldn't be November 8th. November 15th?
15, yeah.
Okay. November 15th.
Right.
All right. Next is town managers' report.
Budgets, as we are all aware, Dave, just so you're aware, I'm of the understanding at this point, the Candidates Night has been postponed. They're not going to do it. There's been some issues that came up, and as a result, that's been canceled. Brad and I also had a conversation, and the tree removal that needs to happen at the Libby Museum, just to get some, a couple of items off my plate at this point. Brad is going to take the lead on that. Put him in contact with the appropriate tree removal company, just so you're aware, that is actively being worked on. Lot of meetings this past week with vendors, construction projects, and Friday morning, we have a kickoff meeting to discuss the commercial dock project with the engineer. So that'll be taking place. And we're very hopeful, early December, to have a open house at Pop Whalen for people to come through, take a look at the work that's been done. And it's coming together, and we are still on track to hopefully have ice for the first week in January. We have received confirmation that the one hang-up item, the transformer, we've got a ship date on that of middle of November. So hopefully, we'll be ready to go. And that project's still going along well. Other than that, busy.
Okay. Questions from the press?
Yes. I'd like to give an update, add on to what Jim said about the Candidates Forum. That's right. The one on the 25th is not going to happen in Wolfboro. My understanding was it was going to be kind of a lopsided representation, and, you know, that was not particularly satisfactory. However, John McDonald said that he and, I think, Matthew Plesh did intend... Do intend to go to the event in Tuftonboro. So there's going to be an event put on by the Tuftonboro Association. It's Mark Howard has been doing the invitations and setting it up. It will be moderated by their town moderator, Steve Brinter. And I guess several Democrats have shown up, and also, some Republicans have accepted the invitation. And then some of the other, who's going to come, is sort of in flux, because there is another Candidates Night going on in Effingham, the same night. So, but of course, that's a different batch of candidates. But for people running for the State Senate, like Bill Marsh and Jeff Bradley, you know, I'm not sure where they're going to be, which place they'll be, or whether they'll be separate. So Tuftonboro is the next debate, and that is the debate for our Wolfboro-Tuftonboro Representatives. That's it.
Thank you. Public input. Limit three minutes per person, not to exceed 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
My name is John Thurston. If you go to page seven, you can follow along. And I'm here tonight to address an issue about a driveway permit application that was issued to Tax Map 232 Lot 8 on Edgewood Terrace in Wolfboro on 8/14 of 2020. issued to tax map 232 lot 8 on Edgewood Terrace in Wolfboro on 8/14 of 2020. Subsequent to the application, the conditions of the approval for the permit and the conformance inspection of the work performed are the reasons why I'm here tonight. I'm not here to defame or disparage any parties, but to get resolution in this matter. For the record, Edgewood Terrace is currently a private road with a 50-foot right-of-way. On the first page of the application for a driveway permit, a resident on Edgewood Terrace notably filled, filled out the application and applied for the driveway permit in front of you. The permission to construct a driveway entrance to a private property on a right-of-way is noted on heading number one on the first page of the application for driveway permit. The authority for the issuance of a driveway permit has existed since the regulations were approved by the Board of Selectmen on 5/20/1998. The regulations require that a driveway permit must be obtained by any landowner intending to do driveway work, entering or exiting on all roads within the town of Wolfboro. The driveway permit application must be reviewed and construct, and construction permit issued prior to any site review or building permit has been issued. In 2009, the planning board amended the application for driveway pursuant to RSA 236: 13 to allow people to appeal the issuance of a driveway permit. Also, this gives the municipality the right to issue the driveway permit by either the public works director or the codes officer. On the bottom of the application on page one, the applicant is asked to please diagram the intended entrance opening and show related information such as stone walls, lot markers, direction of flow of any drainage ditches, telephone poles, and the exact distance of the boundaries. The applicant submitted a picture on page five showing the lot boundaries and the outline of the right-of-way. Also, a couple lines noting on the, on the, on undefined areas. Missing from the diagram are critical drainage areas for, for Edgewood Terrace runoff, foundation drain from the applicant's house foundation, existing culvert drainage areas, stone wall, telephone poles, and exact distances showing proposed boundaries of the work areas. Complemented by the conditions of the approval on pages two and three, any related information is necessary to perform a conformance inspection conditions approval on page four post-construction. The conditions of approval on page two, heading number one, are crossed out and have a C-attached document. Page three outlining a condition that is repeated from page two, heading number eight, where it states, in a circled area, a culvert is not required. Page three, conditions of the approval, say in writing, a culvert is not required at this location. The driveway surface will pitch away from the road surface for a minimum distance of six feet and no less than three inches lower than the lowest point of the road. The resolution in the matter for the selectmen to decide on is that the applicant neglected to follow the conditions of the approval to construct a driveway entrance from Edgewood Terrace onto the private property of the applicant applying for the driveway permit. Negligence was performed when the applicant installed a culvert when the conditions of the approval specifically stated twice that a culvert is not required at this location. Negligence was performed when the applicant failed to pitch the driveway surface away from the road surface for a minimum distance of six feet and no less than three inches lower than the lowest point of the road. As stated on page two and three, heading number eight, of the driveway permit conditions of the approval, Edgewood Terrace Tax Map 232 lot 8. As a result of the applicant's neglect, Edgewood Terrace has a driveway entrance built into the Edgewood Terrace Road, causing water runoff into the Edgewood Terrace travel area, causing road erosion, causing a safety hazard because of the erosion, causing Edgewood Terrace owners of, of properties downstream to pay for repairs of the washed-out areas as a direct result of the applicant's neglect to follow the conditions of the approval. The Edgewood Terrace property owners want the selectmen to direct the public works director or the codes officer to perform a post-construction conformance inspection based on the conditions of the approval for Edgewood Terrace, Tax Map 232 lot 8. The Edgewood Terrace property owners want the selectmen to direct the public works director or the codes officer to hold the applicant accountable and remove the culvert that was installed without approval noted in the approval of conditions, page two, heading number eight. The Edgewood Terrace property owners want the selectmen to direct the public works director or the codes officer to hold the applicant accountable and follow all the criti, critical criteria agreed to on page one, heading items number one through five, specifically addressing heading number four, to finish and install drainage structures that are necessary and prescribed to maintain existing roadside drainage and adequately handle increased runoff resulting from development. So in front of you, I have a set of pictures. The first picture is from 2017, showing the right-hand side of the area where the access was, was planned in. And you can see it's barely a dip in, in the road there. And that, that's, that's why presumably the public works director decided that there was no need for a culvert in, in that area. Picture number two shows the existing conditions. On the right-hand side, you'll see an existing drainage culvert that goes underneath the driveway of the applicant. And in the middle part of the picture, it's hard to see, but there's a, there's a dark spot and there's a foundation drain right there that exits out, that's, that's just off of the, the boundary line of the property. On page 17, you'll see the construction of the, of the crew putting in the culvert where it, where it clearly tips down into the road and does not recede back from the six feet away from the lowest point of the road, less than three inches. It's actually about 18 inches higher than the road. Picture number 18 shows where the water skirts along the front of the area of the, of the new gravel area and, and starts heading down the descent of, of the road. Obviously, when you see the picture there, the water's not going to turn sideways and go into the ditch because the descent of the road is steeper than the descent to the right-hand side to get into the ditch. Page 19 shows again the, the outline of the, of the driveway area performed and another picture of the water not being able to get off the roadway and not get into the drainage course and, and heading down the road. Picture number 20 shows the, the road after 23 years of, of travel, after I put 180 tons of gravel on the road in 1999, it was never touched. Picture 21 shows six months later, when the, when the, when the results of the, of the culvert and the work was performed and how the erosion has deteriorated and, and caused significant damage to our road. Picture number 22 is just up a little bit closer to where the area was, but you can see that the inch-and-a-half gravel crushed area is about a foot deep and trenched there. So that's where we are. So I'd like to get some resolution on this so that we can move ahead. We'd like to do some repairs on the road, but, you know, if, if, if the town is, is going to approach the, the applicant, we would, we would like to know about it so we could work with them and resolve this issue. So I'm open to hearing what the board might have to say.
I just have one question. Who pays to maintain the road?
Each of the homeowners are paying a portion, about $300 a year, which includes snow plowing, one load of gravel and pickup of, of crushed stone off the edges of the road. Comes to roughly about $300 a year. And currently, the applicant and the neighbor next door have, have not paid in two years because they're upset that we're asking them to make the repairs.
I don't think it's unreasonable for us to ask the public works director and the code officer to go down and look at this. I know, I've seen it. I think Brad has. I think a couple of other people have seen it.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think we should...
I think if we're going to have driveway permits, they need to be put in according to the specifications that they signed off on.
I agree.
I'll make a motion that we send the new public works director and the code officer both to this location.
I'll second it. To review and to take any action...
To review it and take any action the town needs to, to correct.
Yeah, I'll second it.
The driveway permit. Okay, and we understand? Fellas in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, John, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Yep. Is there any other public input? Mary?
No, we have to do it.
Okay. All right. I have a motion to go into non-public.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes, sir, yes.
Yes.